We're going to begin tonight with the invocation by Pastor Dan Lewis of the Troy Christian Chapel, followed by a pledge of allegiance if you all join me in standing. Good evening Pastor.
Shall we pray? Our Heavenly Father, we are humbled in this season of the year when we reflect upon the fact that you sent your son into our world. We ask that this gift that was given to us would shape our values, the way that we treat each other, the way that we think about things. We do ask for your blessing upon our council tonight and upon our citizens, upon this meeting, and we ask that your will would be done. May we consider deeply not only ourselves but each other in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The December 19th, 2011 Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Roll call Mrs. Bitner.
Mayor Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Protem McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
Quam present. We begin this evening with a special presentation. Mr. Jim Santilli, the Executive Director from the Traffic Improvement Association, will present an award to the city of Troy for continued commitment to traffic safety. Mr. Santilli, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Just to kind of give you a quick history, back in 1967 Oakland County had one of the highest traffic crash fatality rates in the nation. So at that time about 200 business leaders and public officials came together and, you know, tried to look for a way that they could resolve that issue and out of that the Traffic Improvement Association of Oakland County was formed. All the municipalities here in Oakland County, including the city of Troy, supported along with the Road Commission. We also received state funding for law enforcement grants. And through that we have a traffic engineer on staff and we provide the city with services, also traffic enforcement grants, and then we have a detailed traffic crash data system that allows cities to basically look for areas that need selective enforcement and make engineering improvements to improve traffic safety. You know, we have various support from L. Brooks Patterson and also Ford CEO Alan Maloney and Group Vice President Sue Siski. One of the things I do want to recognize is the city of Troy Police Department. Do you guys want to come up here? You know, I can honestly say I work with a lot of departments here in Oakland County and the Troy Police Department is truly a first-class agency. The Traffic Safety Group, Chief Mayor, all of them are very dedicated individuals that are constantly working, you know, to improve safety here in the city of Troy and in Oakland County. I also want to recognize the Engineering Department as well for the continued improvements they make. As a result, I want to present the Chief Mayor with this plaque here for your continued support for traffic safety. Thank you. We actually did reach an all-time low here in Oakland County in 2007 of traffic fatalities. Unfortunately, that number is increasing and, you know, I would have to think, you know, it has something to do with reduced law enforcement as well, reduced road funding. So, you know, I'd like to ask, you know, on behalf of TIA that please, you know, make considerations when making cuts and, you know, try to keep public safety a top priority. Because again, you know, every time somebody is killed, it's not just a number, it's somebody whose family is torn apart, you know, and friendships are lost because of a traffic fatality. So, again, we appreciate your continued support and thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santilli. Good evening Chief Mayor.
Mayor, we appreciate getting this award. As Mr. Santilli mentioned, it isn't just the Police Department, it's the Engineering, it's the whole city staff and everybody that works in the direction for traffic safety to help us. I wanted to bring some representatives from the Police Department that are involved with the traffic enforcement. We have Officer Wurzacka and Officer Schuler from our Traffic Safety Section and Officer Mindy Weingard, who's our leading officer in drunk driving arrests for past several years. She gets the, she's the perpetual recipient of the Matt Award for the Troy Police Department. She does a very good job for us in that area. So I wanted to make sure we recognize them. We appreciate all the hard work that they do and what they represent for the Police Department. Thanks guys.
Thank you very much. There are no carryover items or public hearings, so we're going to move right to public comments.
Mayor.
Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move to suspend the City Council rules of procedure so that we can move forward item I-6 preceded by the public comment for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion that's been moved by Councilman Henderson, seconded in by Councilman Teetz, to move item I-6 forward. We would have public comments on the Transit Center and then a vote on the Transit Center issue and then we'll move back to our regular agenda. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I can explain, I can turn this into a little bit of a public service announcement. Friday I had prostate removal surgery for a cancerous prostate and I just would like to be able to give due diligence on the Transit Center issue before I might have to step out for a couple minutes. That said, if you're a male and 40 years old, get your prostate checked, get the PSA test done.
A vote Mrs. Bitner?
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Motion passes. So what I'm going to do is read the names on the list. There's 34 people who have signed up to speak this evening and as I read the names, if you want to speak about the Transit Center, please step forward. If you want to speak about another issue, please wait until after we're finished with this issue. First on the list is Michael Hudson, John Tagle, Dave Laken, Wayne Stutzman, Linda Keima, M. L. Geiger, and Irv Wengrow. Okay, next would be Minesh Bakshi.
Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. Three weeks ago I appeared before you speaking as a 36-year resident of the city of Troy and addressed the master plan of the city of Troy in connection with the Transit Center. Tonight I'm wearing my hat as the Chairman of your Planning Commission and have been asked to speak at the request of your Planning Commissioners who are in the audience. Why don't you stand up gentlemen? Thank you. When the Planning Commission had a vacancy, this council selected each and every one of us. Presumably it was not done willy-nilly and that we each had a talent or talents and good judgment that would reflect well on our recommendations to the city of Troy. We tried to do that and in my memory, I think there's probably been only one recommendation to council that you haven't accepted. And I can't even remember, it was a small matter, but by and large you've entrusted us with this job and we have done our best to fulfill it. The Planning Commission is a visiting, this, visioning, thank you, agency of this city to its best in planning for both the present development of Troy and the future development. This council pointed us and asked us to review the Transit Center. This Transit Center has been on our agenda for 10 years, going on 11 years. We have spent a lot of time, the city has spent a lot of its energy in coordinating the efforts for this project with the state and the regional area. Last week our Planning Commission, your Planning Commission, passed a resolution by unanimous vote approving the Transit Center. We believe it is good for the city of Troy, it's good for this region, and we kind of ask you to believe in us and trust in our judgment, which we recommend to you, don't let this go. It would be a tragedy for all to let an opportunity like this pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
As a favor to myself as I take notes, could each person that's going to speak just give their home address if that's okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Tagle.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. 2747 Pine Hill Drive. I'm here before you tonight as both a resident and as a business owner in this community and I wanted to talk to you about the business community in this city. We all know that when business is doing well, this city is going to prosper. We've seen that in the past, we will see it again in the future. You all have a letter in your packet from major corporations and institutions in this city supporting the Transit Center. These leaders that agreed and talked about this Transit Center and agreed to put their company logos on this letter didn't do so short-sightedly. They're long-term thinkers, they're strategic thinkers, and they believe this is the best for this city when you talk about economic development. And if we want this city to prosper again, it's going to be on the backs of the business. They are going to be the ones that's going to raise the tide here and again, the recipients of this will be the residents. So I really, really want you guys to consider tonight the importance of this as an economic development tool for this community. One other thing I would like to mention in our Planning Commission meeting last week, one of my fellow commissioners asked the question, is there another developer that will come to the city today and be willing to spend eight and a half million dollars on a project of the magnitude of this project to be a gateway to not only the local areas but to the region? And the answer is no. This is a critical project. This will be a big, big step for Troy to put itself in the limelight ahead of other communities and also be a part of a much bigger plan as you've read about in many publications in the Governor's Letter. So I really would implore you to put aside your personal beliefs and really consider what this will do for the city of Troy as a whole. Because many, many of the business owners believe that this will put us in a very, very good position for, to be the city of tomorrow today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Laken? And your address?
My address is 4610 Louisa Drive, Troy, Michigan. Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Dave Laken. My wife Nancy and I chose to live in the city of Troy and raise our family in 1977. We chose Troy because it was a progressive community that was looking to the future. In fact, the city of Troy was called the city of the future today. But before I came to the city of Troy to live, I was educated as a civil engineer. I graduated from MSU in 1976, became a professional engineer in 1980. My focus has always been in municipal infrastructure and I have worked both in the private and public sectors, representing the interests of the public when it comes to public water supply, wastewater treatment, stormwater management, and public transportation. I have been very involved in the planning, design, and public infrastructure in southeastern Michigan, including the city of Troy. I'm telling you about my background because I want you to know that my comments here are based upon my civil engineering professional background, which serves people and is not based on any political motivation. There are two facts about our infrastructure, including our road system, that are indisputable. One, Troy's roads are failing, Michigan's roads are failing because of inadequate funding and not doing what is needed to maintain them. Troy roads are in better shape than most other communities because our city's investment in rehabilitation and maintenance programs, while most other local and county roads are falling into further and further disrepair. This trend is not going to change. The future is not in building more roads, which needs more maintenance, but the future for our children and our grandchildren is a regional transportation center. A regional transit center here in Troy is exactly what our community needs now, not in the future. Two, our city, county, and road systems were built with the help of federal dollars. But guess what? Those federal dollars are our dollars. As many of you know, Michigan is a donor state, which means that from 1956 to 2008, for every federal tax dollar we sent to Washington DC, we received only 84 cents back. That rate of return has risen slightly, but the fact remains that when you say, "We don't want to accept federal money," what you are actually saying is, "We don't want our own money back." I ask you as a professional civil engineer who has pledged to serve the public and has a citizen of Troy, to continue Troy's tradition of being the city of the future today and accept our own tax dollars back to build the Troy Transit Center. Do what is right for the citizens in Troy and its future, not based upon any political ideology. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stutzman?
No, I'm not the Transit Center.
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Wengrow?
Good evening. I'll focus my time tonight on the issues and objections many of you have raised regarding the transit project. First is just turning your back on federal money out of principle. I can understand the principle, but there comes a time when the city's interest and our future is much more important than ideology. You were elected not to replace Lansing and Washington, but to serve Troy and only Troy and not some outside movement. Goodness knows we need as much economic infusion as possible to fill our vacant commercial and industrial properties. We need to, we need to build up this tax base so we residents don't have to pay for more taxes, more taxes for essential services, including replacing a library when it expires. One of you mentioned the project was too expensive, yet you were later shown the cost, that the cost per square foot was comparable with some other projects. In addition, several cost reductions were identified for you. One of you mentioned we should pay for it ourselves and when the demand is there. So by that logic, it's okay to raise our taxes to pay for it, but it's not okay to get it for free and then watch our neighbors in Birmingham use it for free on the backs of Troy taxpayers. Now, the mayor's business motto of "Demand First" is something I never heard in any of my MBA classes. After all, how many of us had a demand for a cell phone before it was introduced? Next was the mayor's supporter, Mr. Rice, and we now know that he used both outdated data to make his point, but he also ignored his own chart on page four, which showed a 26% increase in mass transit in the 10 years ending in 2009. So, so much for scientific honesty. Instead, he used the terms heroin express and magnet for crime, certainly racial and ethnic hate words. But this is not the first time we heard those comments from him. He used the same comments when he first spoke to council. Yet our mayor, knowing this, gave him the imprimatur of her endorsement by putting him on the agenda. And to me, that's strike two against the mayor. Speaking of security, you saw the chief memo, so it's a non-issue. One mentioned the perceived lack of support from the business community, but you're seeing that tonight in strength. The next roadblock erected was the Grand Sacra litigation, which is now holding on by a string. The Court of Appeals summarily rejected their latest appeal to do an appeal just 11 days ago and attic them Isle of Four Lions to do that. But we also now know that there's money in the grant if needed for land acquisition. They said on their latest lawsuit filing that, quote, "It will attract people from outside the community," end quote. It's the same attitude from Mr. Rice and the mayor. Last, we heard a concern regarding the change in the light rail project. The light rail, we know, was never part of the Transit Center and in fact, this is a good change for us. It'll provide a direct route for commuters from the Transit Center to downtown Detroit. And it'll provide convenient transportation from Troy to the ground transportation center inside Metro Airport at a small fraction of the cost of a taxi. So every roadblock you have invented has been removed. But some of you are still using the Senate to establish your Tea Party beach idea despite what accosts us in future support from Lansing and Washington and despite the overwhelming evidence. Rejecting the center will be strike three against our city and will be your legacy. The best statement of support I heard about the center was this, quote, "My number one goal for Troy is to create jobs, business redevelopment, and attract new business." Those are not the words of Governor Snyder, those are the words of Wade Fleming in his October 2009 filing with the League of Women Voters. Create jobs, business redevelopment, attract new business. So it's high time for Councilman Fleming to fulfill that pledge. So as you listen to the same objections tonight from people behind me, ask yourself if anything they say speaks to our economic needs. If not, then only a seven to zero vote in favor of the Transit Center will show courage and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your name is?
Geiger.
Mr. Geiger, could you give us your address please?
Am I the next?
Yes, you are sir. In fact, you were ahead of Mr. Wengrow, but I didn't realize.
I'm a retired engineer. I've lived in Troy for 44 years.
Your address, sir?
Most people know there's an, Amtrak goes between Pontiac and Detroit. Apparently, there are a lot fewer know that recognize that the train goes also to Ann Arbor, Jackson, Battle Creek, Grand Rapids, and to Chicago. Besides Troy, funding has been set up for Transit Center for Dearborn on Battle Creek. Pontiac has a new center. Others are underway in Ann Arbor, Jackson, and Grand Rapids. Now, the land has been developer donated. The construction has been funded by federal stimulus rail grants, which would support some local construction jobs. And the potential $30,000 a year maintenance and utility cost is supposed to be at least in part offset by Amtrak. Now, if Troy, tonight votes down this Troy Transit Center project, there are some factual consequences. First, the federal money will not go back to Washington to pay down the federal debt. Instead, it will go to other rail projects, not necessarily in Michigan. None of the federal money can be used for local projects, no matter how great that need may be. Troy, the land will go back to the developer as I understand it. Troy will lose some money. The best figure I've heard so far is in the ballpark of $400,000 already spent by Troy. It has voted down, obviously no result, no, no return on that investment. Troy will lose a federal investment by voting it down that would return at least some of the local money that we export to Washington. With this, we'll at least get a little bit back for the community and perhaps a little bit for a few construction jobs. Now, our new mayor and some of you councilmen ran on a platform which includes defeating this transit project. Some of the reasoning as presented seemed to be based on some misinformation, some of the things I just, some of the consequences I just alluded to. Now, let me please read from the December 5th issue of the Detroit News. I quote, "Daniel said the city should pay for such a big project itself, even if it takes another decade. She said she's planning to recommend that the city designate a savings account for the project and that a portion of the city's reserve fund be added each year." Now, this clip seems to me to show little economic benefit for the city of Troy. For Troy to pay for the entire project down the road aways for regional benefit, whereas if it's voted in favor tonight, we could have some benefit within the next two years. Even the Detroit News in their editorial page on December 5th supported Troy's project on this Transit Center. At least part of this rail system is slated for high-speed rail upgrading in a plan favored by Governor Snyder. Both federal and state funds have this year been voted towards that end. Now, the Troy City, the Troy Chamber of Commerce and many businesses in Troy want this Transit Center. Businesses can't vote, but businesses can and do pay taxes. Currently, 41% of the Troy taxes come from businesses. Now, if this Transit Center can help our local governments or our local businesses and perhaps create a few at least temporary construction jobs, maybe we should give it some favorable consideration.
Mr. Geiger, your five minutes is up.
And, please. I have one line, one sentence, please. It seems to me that we should give the Troy businesses all the consideration we can, in particular after the last current and recent business boycotting.
Thank you. Mr. Bakshi? If you'll wait a moment, let me call five more people up, please. Brian Ammon, Sam Kow, Duann Sundell. Dick Menick. John Vert. Greta Nixon. Joe Philman. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels. 5436 Winchester Drive is the address. I want to make three quick points here today, and I do understand other than engineers are allowed to speak, I am an engineer as well. Let's talk about simple stuff, the global marketplace today. In 12 to 24 months, this decision of Troy Transit Center would look very foolish in my opinion. Why? Europe is collapsing and for those who don't understand maybe the impact that we will have in Michigan and other parts of the country as well, is that there could be severe consequences from economic standpoint for the businesses in general. And hence, $8.3 million or whatever the amount of federal money is there, I think will not look very positive because we'll have much more challenges than that. Okay? The second point I want to make is very simple. People who seem to be very positive about the Troy Transit Center and federal dollars seem to be forgetting and maybe naive about how government projects seem to be going on in this country, especially when it relates to transit. Here is, in 2008, California had their citizens vote for a $33 billion transit system. Guess what? Today the estimate stands at, three years later, $99 billion. I don't think the Troy taxpayer should be on the hook for what could happen down the road with these kind of estimates, number one. Number two. The third part I want to mention is a quick history lesson for those who might have forgotten how 1861, 1862 CPRR, which is the Pacific Railroad Project, took place. Because businesses are saying, hey, we need this here, so let me tell you a little bit about how business people looked at it at that time. Four business people from Sacramento, Huntington, Stanford, Hopkins, and Crocker decided to put in their own personal put in their own personal money to get this project started, which is how US was founded with entrepreneurial spirit. And then later on, obviously, the government helped fund it, but they were returned every single penny, including interest, by 1906. What am I trying to say? If businesses are so interested, why don't they go and find it, fund it from themselves and start it? I know we live in the bailout era here today, so some of the businesses might have received the $85 billion that were given, essentially of which the taxpayer is on the hook for a loss of $26.3 billion today. So all I'm asking the people who are here today is let's be prudent. This is not the project for taxpayers today, definitely not now. When the economy is in a much better situation, we know what we can do. Let us take a look at that time, not today. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And could you introduce yourself and your address, please?
Sure, Mayor. My name is Brian Eamon, and my address is 28470 Thirteen Mile Road, Suite 220, Farmington Hills. I have copies of my comments and writing for you.
If you could give it to the clerk. Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of my client, Grand Saquaw Properties, the owner of the Midtown Shopping Center adjacent to the site of the proposed Transit Center. Grand Saquaw has obviously followed this proposal very closely and has really communicated its substantial concerns in very detailed letters, copies of which are being handed to you this evening and hopefully are part of the record already. For brevity's sake, I'm just going to provide a nutshell of our concerns regarding to the property, which has our next-door neighbor we would have, and also as a taxpayer, a Troy taxpayer. First, the scope and the nature of the project have dramatically changed. They're a moving target. And but more importantly, the numbers surrounding it have moved faster than the kinds of buses where an auto will operate there. With what we've been told by city officials, let me offer the following nutshell view. As a neighbor, I think the well-known phrase, "There goes the neighborhood," just about says it all. There's been a bit of a bait-and-switch. What was sold as a light-speed rail commuter center appears to be nothing more than a new bus station, effectively swapping a promised economic engine for a dinosaur at best and a Trojan horse at worst. The challenges and issues facing bus stations are well-known and documented, including parking, traffic, transit, and crime. Is that really what you want next to one of Troy's and Michigan's most successful shopping centers? Grand Saquaw doesn't, and we know our customers don't, and we don't believe our national tenants do either. As a developer and owner and manager of millions of square feet of commercial and other facilities, Grand Saquaw knows a lot about the related costs. As explained in our detailed letters handed to you and hopefully in your record before, the numbers you have been given for operations and maintenance just don't add up. I can't even describe the cost projections as Pollyanna's prognostications. That would suggest that they're optimistic, when in fact they are entirely unrealistic. You need the category: security, maintenance, insurance, landscaping, snow removal, water and sewer, trash removal, or even light bulbs, or even the shared costs you're going to incur with our center. They don't add up. In fact, the proposal says it will spend only $480 on custodial supplies in a whole year. According to the site plan and the floor plan, it will have public restrooms. You need to know that for our shopping center public restrooms, we spend more than $480 on toilet paper in one month. From the proposed budget for the center, it appears someone believes there's a future in an Occupy Troy event and that somehow should be hosted at this site, because the money you've allocated for the budget in this will not even support paying for porta-johns and blue heart tents. In short, not only do the projected costs of the operation and maintenance belie what our experience is right next door, they are a fraction of the actual costs incurred by experienced private owners and developers everywhere. So which should you believe, the time-tested experience across an entire industry or moving targets by an entity that hasn't owned or operated this kind of facility? You're going to hear from a lot of people tonight, and just telling you how you ought to vote. Being a former assistant county executive myself and a former county commissioner, I realize each of you will just have to make a personal decision as to what you think is best for the city. You've heard my client, Grand Saquaw, the immediate neighbor to the project, has really looked at it from every angle, and we are dead-set against it. But instead of trying to tell you how to vote, let me offer you my best practical advice, not on how to vote, but instead of how you may want to arrive at your decision. And it's really very easy. No matter how many ideas, fears, facts you hear tonight, I encourage you to ask yourself just two simple questions. If you do, it'll cut through all the confusion and all the uncertainty. The first question, what is the evidence? To help you-- this will help you sort the wheat from the chafe. In evidence, to be evidence, something must be provable. To be provable, it must be observable and repeatable. Second, when looking at the actual evidence, ask yourself what is probable versus what is possible. Give priority to that which is probable over that which is possible. What does that mean here? Take the numbers you've been given for the cost of operation and maintenance, the very numbers that the city and its taxpayers will be on the hook for along after the federal dollars are gone. As Grand Saquaw's letters point out in detail, many of the assumptions and estimates for the costs are not provable, because no owner of commercial real estate can operate a center or a facility that cheaply. Such low costs aren't even observable or repeatable, because they don't exist anywhere, let alone in Troy. Are they possible? Sure, if you defy economic gravity of wages and marketplace. In history, we have never seen an example of a facility getting cheaper and less expensive as it gets older and depreciates. It's been said--
Mr. Eamon, five minutes.
Yep. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.[969.82][969.82](APPLAUSE).
Could you just please introduce yourself and give your address?
Good evening. My name is Sam Crowe. I live on Locust Drive in Troy. And I hope that you, the mayor, and the city council has not made a decision until you've heard from all of us. I'd like to call what I'm going to talk about tonight. It ain't a hard question. The supporters of the Troy Transit Center may not be as loud, as vocal, may not jump as high as some of the opponents, but I believe we are the silent majority. I was told in elementary school, there are four necessities in life: food, clothing, shelter, and transportation. If this Transit Center is voted down, there goes the transportation from Troy. We won't be able to take that high-speed rail to Chicago, a great city that was founded by railroads. You need for the train to stop in Troy for us to get on that transportation. Do you, the mayor, respectfully, councilman, have a clue what will happen to the money if we return it? Where will it go? Maybe to Washington, DC to study the sex lives of frogs? If you were to take that $8.5 million and pull out your calculator and say it costs $2,000 a month to maintain the building, I think it's one of the greatest investments in history. At $2,000 a month divided by $8.5 million, it would take about 300 years. 300 years of investment. What a great investment this would be. This is not a race to the bottom, where we want to return the money and let someone else spend it. We have the control, and we ask that you, the city council and the mayor, don't disrespect us. Don't disrespect the citizens and the businesses of Troy. The tax base is down. My property value is down. And if we send this money away, it will only get worse. I spoke to Governor Snyder and asked him if he would call, rate, ask you to support this venture. He said he would. I hope he did. It was about four or five years ago, I watched on TV as this chamber voted on a baseball stadium. Well, some of the junior council members decided that they would vote no, no, on a project that left a field set empty, would have brought a professional baseball team to Troy, but they said no. I hope that this council will not say no. You know, there's never a right time to do the wrong thing, and never a wrong time to do the right thing. It ain't a hard question. If we want our property values to increase, we need to have more business in Troy, not tell business, "We don't want you." We need to bring progress and pride to our beautiful city. I've been a resident for 27 years, and I've always been proud to say, "I live in Troy." And I would hope that you feel the same way, that you want to see this city move up, be the city of tomorrow today, not yesterday. I'd like to be there with you when that first shovel is turned, with you, Councilman Henderson, with you, Councilman Dietz, and with you, Mayor Daniels. And also, when the ribbon is cut, I'd like to be there, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, could you introduce--
My name is Dick Menick. I live on Millstone Drive in Troy. I've been a Troy homeowner for 40 years. This Transit Center kind of brings to mind to me three other projects, major projects that we've had proposed in Troy in the last 10 years. We had the conference center, we had the baseball stadium, we had even a plan for a new, bigger library. I'm not sure what would have happened if any of those had been approved and gone forward, but I do know that each of them brought a tremendous split in the city. Each one of those, even after months of meetings and discussions, had a group of people who were very much for it, another group that were very much against it. And I think the one thing that's stuck in mind, and I don't think that kind of contentious, controversial projects has helped our city, and I think it's really hurt us and split our people and our support for things. I see that happening this time. And I was here seven years ago, almost, in January, when we had the final vote on the baseball stadium. And that had been discussed. Everybody knew what each council member's position was, and we all came to that meeting thinking it was a slam dunk, it was going to be approved by a four-to-three vote. And at the very last minute, David Eisenbacher changed his vote to a no. And he said, although he really favored it, he thought it was a good thing for Troy, that he was concerned that it had caused so much division in the city and that such an important project should not go forward with only a four-three vote. And that was the end of the baseball stadium. So I hope that some of you might recall that as an example. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
I live on Limerick--
And your name?
Greta Nixon.
Thank you.
I have lived in Troy for 16 years. I am a nonpartisan centrist and have several degrees, just so you know where I'm coming from. I'd like to speak for having the center, the new Transit Center, built. I wish I had the time to dispute all the reasons given for not building the center. Some of them were not valid to the point or partially untrue, wholly untrue, but one of the things that Mr. Wise said was true, how very few people use the existing platform. I can tell you why so few do, and it turns out it's the most important reason why I am for it. And that is because when my husband and I go to Chicago, which we do quite often, we take the train and we drive to Dearborn, where they have a nice ample safe parking lot, a little, you know, place there where you can go in and sit down, there's a couple of restrooms, there's a real Ticketmaster that you can buy a ticket from. It is civilized. We have friends in Birmingham who go to Chicago way more frequently than we do, and they have family there. They drive to Dearborn. I know people in Berkeley, in Clausen, Huntington Woods, that go to Dearborn. They would come here. And I bet there's other Troy people that I don't even know of that go to Dearborn to take the train to Chicago. I think that we could have all those people here. I know this is just a tiny portion of this whole question, because there's not much time here. So I want to say, though, that the Transit Centers that are being built around here other than here are the future, because our currently third-world transportation infrastructure is suddenly being, you know, people are talking about it, things are being done, and it's being improved, renewed, repaired, whatever, a whole bunch of different things. And so unlike Mr. Wise's Facebook comment, we don't think this federal government subsidy is Barack Obama's way of ghettoizing the nice suburbs. We don't believe that. I've also heard it said that these are really our tax dollars that are being used from-- Well, I'll tell you, I am happy to know that some of the federal tax dollars that we pay are coming back to Michigan here to do something that we want and we can use. So I think that that's something that a lot of Troy residents will use, in addition to all the other reasons that people have set forth for it. Having the center here may make Troy able to live up to our motto, "The city of the future today." If we don't, it won't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope you vote for it.[1634.73][1634.73](APPLAUSE).
I'm sorry?
We're running out of order.
Yes.
Jack Vert.
Okay.
Creekside, Troy. I'm one of, maybe not the few, but I didn't know how to even consider this Transit Center when I first, so I listened to everybody, and I listened to other things. And finally, I've been reading as much as I could and learning what I could, and I did a little, real simple math, and I said, $8.5 million, and according to Detroit Times, there were 21,000 riders leaving the Birmingham Depot last year. And I said, well, we take three zeros off the million, and we take three zeros off the 21,000, and that means that every 21 riders cost us $85,000 if we do this. Now, I can't understand any businessman wanting us to put $85,000 for every 21 riders. That, you know, you show me a businessman that goes with a plan like that, I'll show you a businessman who's not going to be in business very long. I don't, I do think we need a Transit Center somewhere down the road, and I think when they get a high-speed, and I'm sure any of you have read the newspapers, realize that the government's rethinking this whole thing. I think maybe when we get down the road a ways, we can do a Transit Center, and it might make some sense. But do you realize for a 2,400-square-foot building, I can build it in this room? And we're going to spend $8.5 million? Thank you.
Thank you. Zach Kilgore, Paul Lucas, Kumar Bat, Gordon Shepke, Michelle Hodges. Are you speaking about the Transit Center?
Yeah.
Mr. Kilgore, good.
Don't worry.
Nice to see you.
All right. So a few days ago, I read this great article called "The Death of the Fringe Suburb," and it was talking about how 11% of millennials, which is the generation that I'm in, 11%, only 11% of them want to live in suburbs. And some of the main reasons are because they don't want to pay for cars, which I'm finding out is very expensive, and they want better transit options. Now, Troy has this great opportunity to finally get some of our tax money back, and I just, I think that it's a great way, it would be a great idea to take it, because in the future, you aren't going to get a lot of residents that come here, because a lot of residents don't want to live in suburbs. So we really need this Transit Center to build up, you know, higher-density areas around there. around there. And I just think it would be a terrible, terrible idea to essentially give $8 million to another city. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Mr. Lucas?
Yeah.
And your address, please?
1-850-AXTELL.
That's Paul Lucas.
Paul, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Paul Lucas. I have been a Troy resident for six years. I live by 15 Mile in Coolidge. This is my second city council meeting I have attended. I would like to see the mass transit center come to Troy. I feel and believe it will bring job growth and prosperity to the metro-Detroit area economy. I feel in time and in the long run, this will be a good and wise investment for the city of tomorrow. I do respect the arguments and points against the mass transit center, but the positives should outweigh the negatives in the long term. On Sunday, smart buses run very little and limited. A mass transit center will help make Troy a more known and reputable city. A mass transit center can bring more people to Troy to shop at our stores and malls, stay at our hotels, dine at our restaurants, and bring more workers to Troy to fill job openings. Metro Detroit lags behind other major metropolitan cities around the country on having mass transit. I would like to see it happen and come to Troy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Mr. Bat? And your address?
Kumar Bat, 2831 Winter Drive. Respected Mayor, Council, city employees, and fellow citizens, all we need for the council is to make a sound business decision, void of any ideology. Today, as we gather to decide on the fate of the Transit Center, we need to pause and think whether we want Troy to be the, whether we want to be the job-creating city of tomorrow like Singapore, Seoul, or Toronto, or become the wasteland like Mogadishu, the capital of the city, of the country Somalia. Please note that the Somalis pay no taxes. They have starved the beast, so to say, have no effective government and no regulation. So, under some ideology, Somalia should be the richest nation on earth, right? Hardly. In fact, Somalia with the least government and regulation is one of the poorest countries on earth, with a per capita income of $600. It is ranked, according to 2010 CIA Fact Book, 223 out of 228 countries in the world. Next, I would like to touch upon the public-private partnership. It is a proven business model. Under this model, investments in public infrastructure are made by the government, while the management of operations, which is renewable periodically, is under private enterprise. This taps into the efficiency of the private sector due to competitive bidding in managing the investment, and it is coupled with the effectiveness of pooling people's resources, i.e. government investment for common good. A good example of this model is a public-private partnership management of transportation infrastructure in Virginia, with capital outlays between $31 million and $2 billion. We can have a similar model in managing the operations of our transportation system in Troy and the surrounding tri-counties. Now, what about the demand for a multimodal transit center? There is sizable unfulfilled potential demand for an affordable, safe, convenient local mass transportation. First, I want to reiterate a point I had made two weeks ago about the high cost of college education and the crippling debt load. On average, 50% of college seniors owe about $25,000 when they graduate from college. There are roughly 1,000 students, 1,000 students from Troy who attend Wayne State University and University of Michigan and Arbor. The students and their families in Troy spend roughly $10 million a year on boarding and lodging at these two local universities alone. This is an untapped market for mass transit, providing the students the opportunity to commute to their university from home. Secondly, based on surveys conducted by Detroit Metropolitan Airport Authority, there are roughly 500 to 850 residents visiting the Metro Detroit Airport daily from Troy, Birmingham. We currently face the hassle of driving about 50 miles to the airport, sometimes in heavy traffic, looking for cheaper, long-term parking, unloading our luggage from our vehicle, loading and unloading the luggage onto a shuttle to take us from the parking lot to the airport, and paying anywhere from $8, $10 a day for parking after all those hassles. Over a period of time, the cost of airport parking quickly adds up to a tidy sum. Who benefits from our spending? Not Troy. The expenditure ranging from $1.46 million to $2.92 million per year spent on airport parking by Troy residents is captured by the operators of parking lots around the airport. We should be able to keep those parking dollars within the city of Troy. Thirdly, there are roughly 6,900 citizens, 70-plus years of age, living in Troy. 6,900 citizens. Two weeks ago, we heard Kathy Martin speak about their transportation needs as they find it difficult to drive in their advancing years. So, depending on the pricing of the mass transit tickets, route details, we have an unfulfilled demand of potential of 1,000 riders per day for mass transit. The beneficiaries include senior citizens, families of college-going children, and those of us using the metro airport. In conclusion, we have unfulfilled potential demand for a Transit Center. We can use a proven private-public model for operating the Transit Center and the mass transit operations. All we need for the council is to make a sound business decision, void of any ideology. Please vote yes for the Transit Center proposal. Let us prosper going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shepke, your address, please?
Yes, Gordon Shepke, 328 Paragon in Troy, Michigan. I've heard a lot of facts and figures thrown around here tonight, and anybody should be able to use numbers to show this is all pie in the sky. First of all, when it comes to the federal government, with its cost overruns and everything on these jobs, I don't, I can't remember a job yet that didn't have a lot of cost overruns, but that's really not the point of the whole thing. I grew up in the age of rapid transit. I grew up right after World War II, and we all used rapid transit because we had no other alternative. Sure, there's some people that use rapid transit, but those people are heavily, heavily subsidized by the federal government. Private enterprise wouldn't touch these projects with a 10-foot pole because they're just not cost-efficient, and there's no return on investment. It's a real bad business decision. And a lot of the businesses up here that think that this is going to be the new utopia after you get a, you spend all of the, waste all of this money on a six-train-a-day Transit Center, it's going to be too late to find out just how much this is going to hurt us instead of help us. You know, they talk about all of these other cities, and do we want to go backwards and that, but the major metropolitan cities around us are Detroit, Pontiac, and Flint, and they're already in physical and financial shambles, and they're void of desirable destinations, shop, dine, and go for anybody that lives in Troy to go there. And also, you're going to need additional ground transportation. I picked up something from New Detroit Committee, and it said, "We're going to talk about Detroit. How many people are going to come out from Detroit?" Okay, Detroit, number one, is the murder capital of the world. Number two, it's bankrupt or almost in receivership. Number three, it's, there's a 50% plus unemployment rate. There's, it's, over 70% of the people in the city Detroit are living below the poverty level, and over 40% of the buildings down there don't have running water. And if you think those people are going to come out here, and they're going to spend their money and wine and dine or go to the Somerset Collection, I think you've been putting something in your orange juice, because it's just not going to happen. There's a lot of costs, these maintenance costs and everything that the government is quoting, or somebody's quoting, are absolutely ridiculous, especially when you figure labor costs have to be based on compliance with the Davis-Bacon Act. Not only that, these facilities are going to have to be, you're going to have to pull police protection from the neighborhoods and the businesses to go down and maintain these buildings to make sure that crime isn't brought into the area by people from some of the surrounding cities. And as far as, I don't even think, it's my understanding, we don't even have clear title to that property at this particular time. But it really upsets me that public safety officers will have to be committed to the center regularly to prevent drug dealers, prostitution, or other crime from being imported in Troy. I just don't think this is what Troy wants. We don't want to be, we want to be futuristic, but we want to be practical. This is not a good decision for Troy to jump into right now. There's too much hurt out here in Troy, there's more hurt in the cities around us, and we ought to be working together as Americans to pull each other up by the bootstraps and not go around and spending money that future generations are going to have to pay for, that we have to borrow from the Chaycons and other countries that hate us. So, we have to, we have to take care of business and be fiduciary responsibility. You are governing body, and we have a right to demand and expect you to be fiduciarily responsible with our tax dollars. And I'm up here asking you, don't vote for that Transit Center. It's going to be a millstone around the neck financially, insurance-wise, and everything else for the city of Troy, and we don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hodges, if you could put a moment, let me call five more people up. Thomas Strat. Jenny Greenwall. Dwayne Lumars, or Lemirs. All right. Mrs. Hodges, if you'd like to give your address, please?
I'm tempted, Mayor Daniels, members of City Council, staff, and our community, to be silent. Silent for the full five minutes that you've given me today, so that you can focus on the significance of the stakeholders behind me and around me, and focus on nothing, nothing else but them. My name is Michelle Hodges with 4555 Investment Drive, President of the Troy Chamber of Commerce, and I'm honored to represent this powerful group, for it is they whom make Troy tick, they whom provide the jobs, they whom fill the buildings, invest in our community, and pay 42% of the tax base that keeps our quality of life high here in Troy. They, these globally-minded companies, want a Transit Center. Silence would be powerful at this moment, but I'm going to forego that because we need to be heard. We've been fully at the table from the moment that this project has become in question. We've been earnestly and honestly there seeking solutions, and I'm going to give you a couple of highlights. And I'll start with perhaps what is the most significant, and that is the broad base of support that we have, and the diverse group that you see represented here. We cross every boundary and sector. We have labor representatives, Democrats, Republicans, universities, agencies, planning entities, the public and private sector, and diversity of age as well. We have the unprecedented support of the governor of our state of Michigan and of Automation Alley. And not only are you hearing from individuals in support of this Transit Center, but you're hearing an organized, credible voice from experts that have established themselves in this arena. Secondly, we've brought solutions to your major concerns. With regard to the grants aqua concern, we now know that the residual grant funding that is not necessary at this point can be reserved and held to purchase the property if, in the remote circumstance, they are successful with their appeal. Secondly, as it relates to the operations expense, we believe so strongly in this project that the Troy Chamber of Commerce is going to evaluate it as a location for its headquarters, that we can be part of the epicenter, of the economic hub in this community, and contribute meaningfully to that operations business model. Third, the Woodward Light Rail Project, although we're certainly disappointed the vision for our community is not transpiring, it favorably positions and strengthens the Troy Transit Center. Fourth, crime. Crime comes with progress. Somebody reminded me last week that the Somerset Collection used to be a Christmas tree stand. I certainly think the police department received far fewer calls then than it does now. I do not want to trade my Somerset Collection for that. Fifth, we've been able to acknowledge for you the fact that the 21st century communities at the Michigan Municipal League, which represents the best interests of our community, lists transit as one of the key components to success and to competitiveness. Sixth, we've brought you data, data in the form of Amtrak, who sees this, if we invest in it, as the premier line west of the Appalachians, and they will invest in making 110 mile-per-hour speeds and eliminate bottlenecks. And they're seeing a renaissance of commercial and residential properties that's being driven in the communities that they're investing in, because they're allowing for connectivity that's never been there before. Secondly, you've got data in the form of the business case, and what it will do to property values, to the dollars that are invested and the return on that, and the additional property tax revenue that will come to our community, and of course, the jobs. Also, you see data in the form of your staff. For tonight's meeting alone, you have 366 pages of thoughtful analysis that address all of your concerns regarding cost and crime relative to this project. 366 pages. The professionals that work for you, Troy is their resume. If Troy fails, they fail, and they don't have a future. They're here because they believe in their community. And, seventh, and most importantly, and the essence of why we are here tonight, is what you specifically asked for, and that is strength from your business community. We've submitted to you written testimony that I will briefly, quickly read to you. Dear Mayor Daniels and members of the Troy City Council, as members of the business community, we have observed a reluctance of the Troy City Council to continue development of a proposed Transit Center in the city of Troy. Through discussions with city of Troy staff as coordinated through the Troy Chamber of Commerce, it is our belief that proper research and due diligence has been conducted, and a solid business case established to warrant use of federal funds that have been appropriated for this project. It is our belief the Transit Center would serve as a valued resource for business and employee attraction and retention. Further, if federal funds that have been designated for the development of a rail Transit Center are left unutilized by the city of Troy, the funds will be awarded to-
Mrs. Hodges, your five minutes is up, please. Thank you very much, everyone-
One moment, Mayor Daniels, we respected your time by not sending up people individually. If I could just wrap up-
I need to conclude. I need you to conclude your comments.
Thank you very much. We see this as our future competitive opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, one and all. Good evening. If you could announce who you are. Could we have a quiet? Good evening.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Thomas Strat, 5048 Christie Court. There are two points I wanted to bring up today, and one is the Transit Center, as it relates to Birmingham, their reason for backing out of the Transit Center. And the second is the cost, $8.5 million. First item is, why did Birmingham actually back out? The rationale, I had a conversation with one of the council members in Birmingham two weeks ago, and he explained to me the only reason, and he said, "The only reason why they all backed out was because they had $250,000 that they had from the grant, and it was capped, that that was the amount of money that they could purchase that site." And my understanding is, based on what his conversation was, that actually, Herb Blumberg wanted $900,000, and they could not negotiate down. The lowest that they got was $850,000. So therefore, the Birmingham felt that they could not actually come in with a half-million dollars in order to justify that. And that's the only reason why they backed out. The second item I would like to talk about is the cost, and I've heard comments in terms of overruns, et cetera. I'm an architect. I established my firm here in Troy in '72 on Stevenson Highway. I've practiced architecture since then. I'm registered in seven states. I had $150 million worth of construction cost dollars and fees when I sold my firm 12 years ago. I primarily felt that my firm primarily focused on both municipal work and actually schools. As a matter of fact, we designed and engineered the existing court building here in Troy. I feel I have qualifications in terms to make evaluation on the cost of the Transit Center. In my opinion, I don't think that Transit Center should exceed anywhere near the $8.5 million, closer to five, maybe four, five million. And there could be some overruns, but not in excess of that. I'm also a member of the Planning Commission, and I understand that that is supposed to come before us for review and a design evaluation. And we have two architects on the Planning Commission, as well as an engineer and very qualified people on the Planning Commission to review that. And I certainly think that it will be a very successful project. The other aspect that I want to talk about in terms of the financing is I heard comments in terms of, what is the return for the investment? What was the return for the investment- What was the return for the investment for the airport? There is no real return. You don't get a return on those kinds of funds. That is something that actually enhances the entire neighborhood. And actually, we are concerned about, what are we like 10 years from now and 20 years from now? Where are we going to be? And what is the need of transportation at that point? And we had done a considerable amount of evaluation as a planning commission in terms of evaluating where do we want to be 20 years from now? And this, I think, is a very vital, important part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Greenwell? And give us your address, please.
Thank you. My name's Jenny Greenwell. I'm a guest tonight. I live at 577 Tally Ho Court in Bloomfield Township. And one of the reasons I'm here tonight is that when I got home today, my husband was watching the news, and he caught this item on the news. And he actually, he was tired, and he asked me to go. And I'm a neighbor, okay? I, I do a lot of business in Troy, as you know. Bloomfield Township doesn't have a lot of commercial business and so forth, so we do our business here, Rochester, Birmingham. My perception of being an Oakland County person and need, a need for public transportation would be to service the airport. And right now, SEMCOG is working on a system to get people from downtown Detroit through the airport and to Ann Arbor, which would be a really good leg of public transportation to serve our community. Because as you know, we all make a lot of trips to the airport to pick up aunts and uncles and kids and cousins and grandmas and things like that. And I've just come through a whole slew of that through the Thanksgiving holiday, and I would have loved to have had them catch a bus to get to somewhere that I could get to more easily. However, with the scrapping of the light rail plan, we're talking about a bus depot here. And I have nothing against buses. I don't think that's necessarily a bad idea, but I would like to caution you that you've got about 125,000 residents, taxpayers of your community, and most of them are not here tonight. If this is going to impact their personal property taxes, please give it some real serious thought before you impose another cost on residents. I've heard from a lot of residents. I'm a founder of a grassroots group that's very active in Bloomfield, and believe me, there are a lot of people that are maxed out on, on what they can spend on property taxes. So if you're going to do something that's going to increase operating costs, you're already having trouble keeping your library open seven days, please give it some very careful thought before you impose additional costs to your tax-paying residents. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could introduce yourself and then wait a moment.
Madam Mayor and members of the council.
Could you wait a moment till I call five more people up? Could you give me your name, please?
Dwayne Lemires, a 24-year resident here in Troy at 5677 Cliffside Drive.
Okay, hold on a moment, please. I'm going to call more people up to the podium. Did Bill Kauger want to speak? Yes, okay. And Fred Echow, did you want to speak on the transit center? Donald Frazier? Gerard Stager? And James Savage? I'm sorry, Mr. Savage?
No, I just kind of, I mean, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sir. Thank you very much.
I would like to say that we take note here that a lot of this funding for the proposed transit center comes through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, popularly called the stimulus fund or the porcullus fund. And where did we get that money? From floating more bonds. In short, we do not have the money in this country for the transit center and a whole lot of other things because of the belt tightening we must do. Secondly, I would call to my, call everybody's attention here to the fact that something our second speaker and a later speaker mentioned too. There have been no private investors offering any of their expertise and their funding to go forward for something like the transit center. In short, business that would put something together like that and be responsible for its maintenance and hopefully for some profit does not see that as a valuable project at all. And I think in this day and age, we've all got to take a careful look at what we plan to do with money we do not have. Washington is giving us a very clear example of that during the past couple of years, and we do not need to follow down that route. Perhaps sometime down the line, there would be a reason to look once again at such a project. Perhaps it could do the city some good. But at this time, I don't think we need to put our local taxpayers at risk, and that's ultimately what we would be doing with something with a project like this at this time. There has been simply too much within the past week, too, and the changes made in local transportation programs or, or plans that indicate to us that, as the speaker just before me noted, to this will not be a train station, this will be a bus stop. So it seems for the time being. I think we would do well to hold off on such a project for the time being. I don't think we can afford to let local civic boosterism, which is good in itself, but is primarily emotional, and does not face up to the cold, hard facts that the federal government does not have money that it would give to us to spend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kauger?
William Kauger, 6499 Atkins, and a 35-year resident of Troy. I, I do have to address the Grand Sacra guy that got up here and is against us. Of course they're against it. They get 2.7 acres back if we, if you guys put this down. Who wouldn't be against it? They don't want, they'd love to have that property back. For him, if you didn't listen to any of those numbers and believe anything he had to say, you got to be nuts. They are the ones that are reneging. They made a commitment to give that property to Troy, and now they're doing all this funny legal crap to try to get it back. They're, they're the ones that are reneging on a commitment to us. And then here they are saying that they don't want the project. Sorry. I was not planning on saying that, but I could not have resisted. Number two, let's assume this was never, is not a bus station. It's not even close to a bus station. It was never justified on a bus station. It was never justified on local transit. It was never justified on any kind of a, of a daily run. It was justified on long-distance rail with Amtrak. That's the only justification. The, the environmental study purely is on, on that, and it's done on the lousy service we have today, not the new service that's coming tomorrow. The low ridership projections are based on taking up to seven and a half hours to get to Chicago, and the only people that use it are the ones that can afford to do that, and you can't be sure you're going to do that then. There's 9,000 people a day that fly to and from Chicago every day. If we had a regular service that got us there in four and a half hours, Troy would become a destination for people all over the Midwest. We're going to, we have the potential of throwing that away. Let's assume you approve it, and all the experts are wrong. The experts, including the governor, the experts, including the University of Michigan, the Department of Transportation, both in Michigan and with the feds, the chamber, and all the business people that stood here that represent over 30,000, those people stood here represent over 30,000 jobs in Troy right now. That was Meritor, that was the hospital, that was Beaumont Hospital, that was AT&amp;T, that was Miller Canfield. 37,000 jobs stood up here a little while ago and said, "We want this transit center." Now, if you want business in Troy, you bought your jo, you got your job and ran and became in the position you are by supporting business, and if you're going to ignore it, then you're going to ignore it. But that's totally being disingenuous to what the thing. But if, if we're all wrong, if all those people, including the governor, if all the cities along Amtrak right now, who are loving what they've got, the ones that can't wait for it, would love to have it and can't get it, if they're all wrong, the worst case is, there's $8.5 million, up to $8.5 million, and we probably won't spend more than six at the most, the rest of it, we will return. There's, the worst case is it goes back to the feds. It goes back to some other city, and they're going to do it to be more competitive than we are. The, if we're, if we're wrong and you approve it, and nobody uses it, then we do have the $30,000 cost, and we have all kinds of buildings in Troy that we know how much it costs to run them. We know how much it takes to have a police there. We know how much it costs. It's not as if this was a, a guess. These guys know what they're doing. But, so that's it. The big risk, if you, if we, if you approve it, and we're wrong, and all these experts are wrong, that's the risk. However, if you say no, and you're wrong, then you're throwing away eight and a half million of our dollars. You're throwing away 90 jobs immediately. You said you were about jobs and business. You're throwing away $15 million a year, according to the governor. That's over $70 million in the first five years. You're throwing away our reputation. We did sign a contract that we were going to build this. Now, there's no financial penalty, but we did sign a contract that we were going to do this. Now, how many people have you ever had break a contract with you, whether it was any financial responsibility or not? How many have you ever done business with again? You think we're going to get future grants? You think we're going to get assistance from the government ever again, from the state or anywhere else? We're going against the governor. We're going against the, the Federal Department of Transportation. It, it's against business, as you heard from here, and it's against our reputation as a city in this. And it truly is something we have to have for our future.
Thank you. Mr. Echow, your address, please.
5740 Green Hill Drive. Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm here to encourage you to take a conservative approach to this project. You know, I, I've been sitting there, listening for the last half hour and listening, trying to keep an open mind to all the different points made, but it seems to come down to the fact that the, the costs are readily identifiable, and the growth and, I'll call it, revenue projections are somewhat questionable. And I, I don't think that the city at this point needs to engage in questionable projects that have questionable financial merits. I think the city really needs to concentrate on continuing to deliver the existing services. We just went through a long battle trying to keep the library open. We were successful at doing that through a tax increase. The city continues to need to focus on basic services like road maintenance and repair, keeping the streets cleaned in the winter, that sort of thing. I, I don't think the city, the city's direction is to engage in, is projects of questionable financial merit at this point. Secondly, this project will link the future of Amtrak to the future of the city. And I was a little confused when I heard about funding for Amtrak that's being provided by the governor, or pledged to be provided by the governor, because from everything I'm reading, Amtrak subsidies in Washington are targeted to be cut. So if that is the outcome, as some of the prior speakers have alluded to, we would be saddled with something that's nothing more than just a glorified bus station, which is something that I, I don't think the city really needs either. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stager? If you could wait a moment while I call five more people up. Richard Peters, did you want to speak about the transit center? Ellen Cuper? John Ashcroft? Sybil Kickum? Dale Murish? Well, if Mr. Peters could come up here. Mr. Peters, you're after Mr. Stager. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stager.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Daniels and members of council. I want to be brief because I've already spoken out against a transit center, but I want to bring up a couple arguments that were not brought up before. The people who say we should have the transit center almost never talk about what it will cost the city of Troy. They don't talk about how much it's cost to have the assistant city manager work on it. I think you furnished hundreds of pages of data from the city manager's office. The city attorney, I believe, has had to deal with it. Someone from the Chamber of Commerce had to correct herself tonight and say that there is still litigation going on. This matter is not settled. There will be a cost of over $30,000 a year if it's built. Someone said maybe, possibly, some of it might be offset by Amtrak. Probably not. Commitments have not been made. Councilman Teats very astutely noted in the study session that Amtrak funding goes up and down. I used to work for SMART. It used to be called SEMTO. We ran the commuter train on those tracks that rode the commuter train. We had a cutback in funding. We got rid of it. It was very expensive. We needed bus service. We needed buses on 12-mile and 9-mile road for people to get to work. We couldn't afford the train. Amtrak was having crunches. Troy will be stuck with the bill. Birmingham has been mentioned. Birmingham, as you know, has dropped out of the project, and we hope that Troy, many of us hope that Troy will too. Birmingham was lucky. Birmingham found that the cost, the money that they got from the federal government could not absorb the cost of the transit center. They couldn't buy the land. They were able to pull out. If you go ahead with this in December, you can't pull out. If there are changes in federal mandates, Troy will be responsible. And an important point is to...